On the Parliament's website, the transcript will be made available by the Hansart in the traditional fashion. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, the House has authorised the filming, broadcasting and photography of the committee proceedings. Any person filming or photographing proceedings must take responsibility for the proper use of the material. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. So witnesses need to be careful about their comments away from the formal hearing. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections on others. We have a procedural fairness resolution of the House adopted in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today, want more time, they can take the answer to the question on notice. Written answers to questions can be provided within ten days. And Mr Smith, if you want to hand up documents, you can do so through the committee staff available around the table. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphones. And for those participating remotely, please ensure your microphone is muted when you're not speaking. We have a number, we have a number, our witness is in person and we have three MPs on the WebEx. Finally, if everyone can turn their mobile phone to silent for the duration of the hearing, I now welcome our first witness. And Warwick Smith, if you could please state your name, position, title and swear either the oath or affirmation. Thank you.
Warwick Leslie Smith, company director and investor. I'm going to make my.
You've got the words there in front of you to swear yourself in?
Thanks, Mr Chairman. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much. And Warwick, it's available to you to commence your evidence by making a short statement, if you wish to.
Mark, can you hear okay?
Yep.
Good, good. From the 2nd of March 2018, I've been the non-executive chairman of Aqualand Group. My role as executive chairman of Aqualand Group is in an advisory capacity and not in a formal operational role. As a non-executive and I am also not a formal director. At a practical level, I act as a business liaison between Jin Lin, the founder and group managing director, and in that he continues in that role, and his father, Lin Yi, enter by high-level strategic advice to Aqualand Group primarily on trade, banking, finance and investment. These areas have been my focus, given my background working at ANZ and Macquarie Bank and my experience and interest in international trade. In addition to the above, I mainly focus on trading and investments at Aqualand. I had a key role in establishing the financial investment arm of Aqualand Group, AL Capital. AL Capital has more than a hundred million under investment, focused predominantly on the Australian equity market and private equity, both in Australia and overseas. Some of the investments we have made were into McGrath Real Estate and Ausbiz TV, leading providing news in Australian business markets and startups. I provide advice to AL Capital on potential trades and investments. I am not an employee of Aqualand and I'm not involved in the day-to-day operations of Aqualand. I hold a number of other roles, including being the chairman of the Advisory Board of Australian Capital Equity, holders of interests through seven group holding in a range of Australian premier companies. I'm chairman of Ord Manette, a leading private wealth management group, and I have other board directorships. I am aware of the terms of reference for this inquiry and will endeavour to assist the committee to the extent I can, despite my role, limited however it is, at Aqualand's development at Central Barangaroo, under the terms of reference of the committee. Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll start our questioning with the deputy chair, the honourable Anthony D'Addams.
Thank you, Mr Smith, for your attendance today. I wanted to perhaps ask first of all about your role in the Central Barangaroo project. Could you perhaps just elaborate on what role you played, if any, in terms of Aqualand, liaising with Aqualand and other players in the Central Barangaroo project?
Well, Central Barangaroo was an early investment of Aqualand that took place before I arrived and it continues to be an investment waiting for implementation by the group. When I arrived, I appointed a new CEO of the whole group for the property side of the group and we hired someone out of the Middle East who previously been at Murbach and came back to be the CEO of Aqualand Property. And he continues in that role and now described as the chairman of the Barangaroo Development. So my role has not been involved in it to a very, very limited degree, not directly at all. The idea was to have a senior Australian property person to help consolidate the group's investments that had been made back in 2017, 2016, 2017, and put someone senior there to help a young Australian, Jin Lin, as he developed the opportunities that the investments would provide over time. So Barangaroo is always run by the operational team and headed up by the CEO of the group. That's John Carthy, as you know.
So perhaps maybe if I then ask more specific questions, because...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well.
I might just ask a more specific question then, given that I'm still a bit unclear about the nature of your role. In terms of Central Barangaroo, did you ever have any communication with Premier Gladys Berajiglian on this issue?
No, all communications with her and others were done by the operational team and the CEO.
You never spoke to Premier Berajiglian about this issue?
Never about specifics with regard to this project.
No, about this issue.
Point of order, Mr Chair. How quick, how quick we're delving into the mud, the mud throwing. I, my point of order is this previous Premier Berajiglian well outside the terms of reference on this inquiry.
Well, just ruling on the point of order, I don't think the role of the responsible premier is outside the terms of reference at all. And Mr D'Addams asked a question about conversation, the answer was not about the detail, which leaves open what generalities might have been discussed between Mr Smith and former Premier Berajiglian.
We had, we had Mr Baird here last, last meeting and interrogate him at length about this.
I'm ruling the question in order.
The, the, the question, the question's about Berajiglian and sightlines. No, I don't have any involvement with her. I did have involvement with her very early on when we had the, Aqualand was set up when I took on the chairmanship.
So you had no conversations with Premier Berajiglian about the Central Barangaroo development?
Not, 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 not in relation to the sightlines issues, no.
Well, in relation to what, Mr Smith?
We were an investor and we were waiting to be able to action on our investment. So it was a matter of how long is it going to take?
So you had conversations with her about that?
I, I had mentioned it to her, yeah.
In what context can you recall?
She, she met, she met with Jin Lin and Yin Lee.
And you were present?
I was present, yeah. And others. And we were saying to her that, you know, you're, you're the premier, we've invested, we're hoping that this thing can go on. Now, that was very early on, yeah.
Roughly what time?
About just after I was appointed.
Oh, in 2018?
Twenty eighteen, yeah. But not involved with the, the issue of the commercial dispute around sightlines. I'm not involved and had no discussion with her, she wasn't even there then.
Mr Smith, I'm aware that there was a text message from John Carthy to Craig Vanderland on the 17th of December, where it suggested that Mr Carthy has said Warwick is in China and he's going to try and speak to Gladys today in regards to Central Barangaroo.
So that was the meeting I just told you about, yeah?
At the end of December. December 2018, that's, that's the meeting.
Yeah. It was a formal meeting with the consul general, with the whole cast of people, yeah.
And so what was the outcome of that discussion?
Well, it was not just an information courtesy meeting, not, not an operational meeting.
What was Mr Carthy expecting you to resolve through that discussion?
Well, he doesn't say he's looking for a resolution. He has to deal with the business of the company with the authority and that's what he was doing and that's what he continues to do.
So you, you're suggesting that you had just a general discussion, I'm not exactly sure of the specifics of what you've said, saying you said to Ms Berajiglian? Could you perhaps elaborate on the nature of the conversation? What specifically did you say to her about this?
I just told you, it was a courtesy meeting between the premier and the consul general and the, and the, the people that were with her on a delegation and others, as she was passing through China.
Why would Mr Carthy raise this with Mr Vanderland?
Well, you might have to ask him, mightn't you? I don't know why he would raise it with Mr Vanderland.
Well, clearly you had some expectation that you would do something, that you would achieve something out of the discussion.
I had no expectation that I was required to do anything in relation to other than say, hey, get on with it so we can use the development funds that are still held by the state government.
Can I ask you about the transaction that involved GrowCon transferring its development rights to Aqualand? Did you have any involvement in that?
No, I didn't, don't have involvement in that.
Do you have knowledge of it?
I have knowledge of it, but I don't have involvement in it. My role was an advisory board, once a month meeting. All operational matters were dealt with by the team. Mr Jin Lin and Mr Carthy and others in the team, very competent and capable team.
It's been suggested by Mr Robertson that, that irrespective of the, of Infrastructure New South Wales issuing the, the sightlines notice, that the transaction was well and truly in train at the time that the, the deed of sightlines resolution was concluded between the parties. And that irrespective of whether the notice had been issued, the transaction where GrowCon transferred its development rights to Aqualand was going to proceed. Is that your understanding?
Well, the commercial terms of it, I think, have been canvassed well, as far as I understand it, in earlier testimony, Mr Robertson's given his view. And then I also saw that the subsequent person in charge of that area has given his view. It was a commercial transaction. As I recall, GrowCon had approached Aqualand and we had ongoing negotiations with, which I was not involved, and that they were done with Jin Lin and Carthy and agreed to with the principal of GrowCon. And the, the authority responded appropriately. We, we, it was a commercial transaction.
So you've reviewed the transcript then, so you're aware of the evidence?
I'm not fully aware, I've read briefly, yeah, on the way today.
So coming back to my question, was it your understanding that there was a binding agreement between GrowCon and, and Aqualand before the 19th of August, when the deed of sightlines resolution was signed?
Well, there ended up being a binding agreement on which it was executed, so yeah, there was at some point. Exact legal point of the timing, I wouldn't know, but you know, that was the deal and that was consummated and it was done. Mr Grolla got his, you know, his negotiated position.
But it is critical in terms of the, the whole story that we're examining, which is Mr Grolla asserts that if the sightlines resolution, the sightlines resolution deed, sorry, the sightlines notice had been issued immediately after the 19th of August, that that would have affected the price of the transaction, that the amount that he would have, that GrowCon was going to receive as a result of the transaction with Aqualand. And Mr Robertson asserts a contrary position, which is, no, there was already an agreement between GrowCon and Aqualand that was well and truly in train and that irrespective of whether the notice was issued, the price wouldn't have changed. What do you say?
Well, I think that the, the authority acted appropriately with regard to what Aqualand had negotiated with GrowCon.
That's not my question, Mr Smith.
Well, that's the answer, you might not like it, but that's the answer. You can't actually extend yourself with something that I don't know about.
It, it has nothing to do with the Infrastructure New South Wales, the question I'm asking you.
Well, we, we did a transaction and the transaction was acted upon. And that's what Mr Grolla wanted.
So is it your evidence?
He came to Aqualand.
That there was no binding agreement?
I don't know whether it was binding at that point or later on, but the end agreement was acted upon and he received the compensation he sought under the contract.
Perhaps you might take that on notice, if you're unsure about whether there was a binding arrangement with Aqualand and GrowCon.
You have to ask others, I can ask others in the group or you can ask others in the group and bring them before you. But I'm not here to answer the detail because I wasn't involved in the detail.
Well, you're here.
I'm here, you can say me, Penny.
Order, order, no, no.
No, come on. Chair's supposed to protect, you know, people being harassed by a committee member.
I'm not too sure there's any harassment going on, but what I would ask is to go one at a time and to stick to the substance of this rather than frivolous matters.
I'm trying to get some clarity about the position.
I've given you the answer that I've given.
Order, the, the, the.
I've given you the answer that I've given.
The committee member can ask the question, let him ask it in full and then we'll have an answer in full, thank you.
Now, you either don't know.
Because I've told you, I don't have the detail.
Order, Mr Smith.
I've told, I've told you.
Mr Smith, you keep defying my ruling that Mr D'Addams should be able to answer, ask his question in full and then you can give a, an answer in full. So let's just go one at a time. Thank you.
So is it, is it the case that you are unable to obtain that information about the status of that transaction? It, it's central to the whole question about whether Infrastructure New South Wales made a decision that was appropriate or inappropriate, if there was some material impact of the issuing of that sightlines notice on or around the 19th of August? If they'd done it?
I'm sorry, I have no advice on that. I'm not involved in that, others in the company are and more than happy to provide that to you, I'm sure, if you ask them. Because it was a commercial transaction.
So you're not prepared to, to...
Well, I'm not going to talk about things I don't know.
You're here representing Aqualand?
I'm, I'm required to be here because you asked me to be here. I'm not here necessarily representing Aqualand. I'm here because I have a role there, it's not an employee role, it's an advisory board role.
Okay, well, you've been sworn in as the executive chairman of Aqualand.
Non-executive chairman of Aqualand, in charge of the advisory board, focusing on the financial sides of the activity and not on the property side.
Okay, well, the witnesses have a...
But that's pretty clear, Mr Chairman.
Okay, witnesses have a responsibility to answer to the best of their ability.
I have been answering to the best of my ability, I feel as though I'm being harassed.
I know, well, well, being asked questions is not harassment. It's not harassment at a parliamentary committee to answer questions. So answer the questions to the best of your ability. Next question, Mr D'Addams.
Mr Smith, do you know Tim Robertson?
Yeah, I do.
Are you aware that he was contracted to do some work for Aqualand?
He was employed as a contractor, but I was not involved in it and I didn't know he was there for several months after he arrived, so. And he's worked directly to the property group, he's not involved with what I do there.
How, what was the nature of your relationship with Mr Robertson? Did, do you have a personal relationship with him?
No, I don't, I don't know him, other than meeting him in the Aqualand area.
Right, I see. Do you, are you able to tell us what he was contracted to do for Aqualand?
He'd worked in the property group, across a whole range of property issues and different properties that we were invested in and reported through into the CEO.
And did that include the Barangaroo Central project?
All the property activities were involved, yeah, as I understood it, yeah.
So that's a yes, is it?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm not involved with that.
Is it...
He doesn't sit on the advisory board, for example.
Do you have any direct knowledge of how the arrangements that were struck with Mr Robertson about how he came to work for Aqualand?
No, no, I don't, that was done by an arranged board by the CEO.
Other questions, Mr Sewell? No, Mr Mallard?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Can you hear me clearly? Yeah?
Yeah.
Yes? Yeah, no. Had a lot of trouble yesterday on the, on the, on the WebEx. Good afternoon, Mr Smith, thank you for coming in, our only witness today. Your Aqualand, which now, understanding you, I know employee of, you're an advisory board of, it, it is currently a party to a Supreme Court case about this whole issue, is that, is that right?
Well, I, I understand it's probably part of it because of the action taken by GrowCon against the Barangaroo Authority, have two titles, and that Aqualand is part of it because we were in a commercial agreement where we were approached by GrowCon to purchase out their interests in Barangaroo, which we did, and to give us greater capacity to give effect to the original investment of building Central Barangaroo, which still is ongoing and hasn't started.
So your understanding is that Aqualand is somehow joined into this Supreme Court case?
Well, I, I understand, like, I, I know GrowCon, the principals, they have worked for me extensively on, on a six-year project building 142 Pitt Street, so I understand what they're, what they're doing and that they're seeking to use litigation to recover where they can and make assertions to the court, which the court will decide in due course and because...
Well, that gets, that gets to another, my question to you. I, I'd assume, you may have got legal advice before you came here today, a wise businessman like yourself would have. Are you anxious to appear before our inquiry, given the court case that's ongoing at the moment? And does that constrain you talking about what, what occurred in, in that period?
Well, I'm quite happy to, thank you, now, quite happy to talk about, about what I know. But the, the, the commercial arrangement that was struck between GrowCon, which was initiated by GrowCon and Aqualand, enabled GrowCon to receive funds that are desperately needed, of course, with the financial position they were in, and that often happens unfortunately with developers where, you know, they have extensions into a whole range of projects. So I understand that. But, you know, the, the, the court case continues on, we will provide what we always do, that is the fact of the situation. You want the fact about that detail, I just, they're going to not involve with it and I didn't get engaged with it. I'm suggesting that, you know, the others in the company, who are all still there and, and very, very capable and focused people and, and did all that they needed to do with the Barangaroo Authority and the people involved in it. And so the, the litigation, you know, if it's, if it's assisted by an inquiry or assisted by media activity to get a better outcome of the court, I think that's misguided strategy. But it doesn't mean that, you know, it can happen if it happens, but, you know, these matters are well understood in the property world, what happened to GrowCon. And, you know, we, we in Aqualand and the principals, Mr Lin and Mr Jin and the CEO, did what they could to strike a commercial outcome that was going to be conducive to Aqualand's long-term aspiration to be an active participant in Barangaroo, and they continue with that aspiration.
If you read the transcript of Mr Grolla's evidence and he held back no punches and the whole, this whole inquiry has been very much conspiracy theories about people involved and, including some questions you asked us a minute ago, do you think there is other, other influences at play here?
Well, I mean, you know, he, he's a, he's a, they're a serious company over a serious long period of time and this had not gone well. So fighting to recover what he's able to fight utilizing the courts, but making broader-based allegations, I think, or assumptions or assertions to whatever, whatever platform needs to be very, very considered, the courts will resolve the commerciality or otherwise and then the broader issues that are raised by the sightlines inquiry will find its own place, but it's got to be based on the facts that are the reality of the commercial transaction. You know, you can't rewrite the commercial transaction if you've lost the situation in an investment that you had by utilizing public affairs and with respect, parliamentary committees or broader-based media or telling, you just have to deal with what actually is there and what actually happened and to somehow suggest there was other, some improper motive by people that involved, like myself, is just, is just not, is not correct.
No, thank you, Mr Chair.
Ms Fyman?
No, thanks, Chair, I don't have any questions for Mr Smith.
Mr Amato?
No, fine, thank you, Chair.
Mr Rath? Mr Smith, what are Aqualand's current intentions for the site? You've recently had a development proposal knocked back by the government, so where do you think it's headed in the future?
Look, the, the recent decision on, on Central Barangaroo, which was to have an additional tower, was rejected, not unexpected, and so that doesn't move away from Aqualand's intention to do what it originally, that is develop Central Barangaroo. GrowCon fell over, you know, they came down three of them, finally it was agreed. So to try to preserve Central Barangaroo, which is building the area over the top of that railway station, connects with the aspiration on the other side of the harbour, where Aqualand has other properties, and so the linkaging of those two parts and those two developments, North Sydney and Barangaroo, is a desired outcome for a lot of people that are involved in property because they're, you know, very significant in Australian sites. So that's the aspiration. The fact that they didn't get a tower is not something that's overly concerning because there's a range of issues when you have to build a tower. We've already got the, the rights to build Central Barangaroo and the clarity that now has been given means that the focus will come on to what's happening at the Central Barangaroo, going up several stories over the top of the station.
Right, so what does that mean? You're preparing a new development proposal sans the tower?
There's existing, the existing development proposals, they're there and now that has to be, you know, they've got to finish all the other towers, you know, there's two other, three, four towers, three towers, they've got to finish those and then they start over the top as they finish off the station area, which is done underneath.
Right, so what's your expectation on the timetable for building on top of the station area?
Chairman, Mark, you, you tell me, they've been waiting six, seven years now. So, you know, it's embedded, mainly the cash is in the hands of a third party to the benefit of that, that, that development, when and if it can proceed. So they've been patient, they stay there, they watch, they hope, they do other developments and mainly in North Sydney, and so there's a linkages between the two.
Right, it's hard to understand though, given the size of the harbour, how there's a linkage between your North Sydney developments and Central Barangaroo. The, the, the actions at Central Barangaroo, what's, what's the company's best-case timetable for building something on top of the railway station?
Well, we'd probably think it's a three-year project, but you know, the team and John would know exactly what we think.
What, what's your best opportunity for starting the, the construction?
Starting, well, the, the railway station's coming on, yeah, so it's probably not a long way away, but clarity around what else can be done on the site is now a little clearer and additional developments going on to the site aren't necessarily going to take place. So you finish what's there, what's approved, and then they finish the station and then a company like Aqualand, who's invested heavily in North Sydney, because the, the connection basically is the flow of traffic between the two, because of the new railway line will put some batting into both ends of the, the system.
Right. And you mentioned earlier on that you had a courtesy meeting with Gladys Berajiglian to talk about your Central Barangaroo investment. Were there other government ministers that you, you presented it to as well?
No, no, I'm not involved in other government ministers, not on Barangaroo.
The only minister you spoke to was Berajiglian?
Yeah. There was one occasion when the current premier visited the site and it was a big day where he visited the site, I was there, but I couldn't speak with him. It's a whole bunch of different people from all different parts of the development, other developers and so on.
Right, and how do you answer the GrowCon concern that they waited so long to get their sightlines, but the day after the project was transferred to Aqualand, they became available, it just looked incredibly coincidental, didn't it?
Well, my, my understanding was that it was well known that they were on the verge of potential financial difficulties and that it was known that we were in discussions with them to do a transaction. Despite your question, I don't know quite the answer to that, but so then, then when it was clear that someone was going to have authority of and sufficient capital capability to be able to be the investor and the potential medium-term developer, then it would give the comfort to the regulator to proceed, to let it do what needs to be done. So that's how I interpret things were done. And that was all done, given that it was GrowCon who came to Aqualand, Aqualand said, okay, after a lot of discussion, as I understand it, finally got to a price, then it was done and then the transfer was made. To give continuity to the project, I mean, there's a lot of pressure on governments to get Barangaroo, railway station, other developments, given all the other things that have gone on in that area, not totally related to the construction part, to give it some veracity and some authenticity that it will continue and will be completed.
But do you accept GrowCon's position that their financial problems were caused by the indefinite delay in getting their sightlines notice?
Oh, I, I don't think that. The court will decide, but my opinion is probably not. I think there are other issues at play, knowing GrowCon.
Right, and there seems to be documents, certainly email exchange, that Mr Robertson was instrumental in basically organising that GrowCon would, would not get their sightlines notice, that must have caused them some financial angst, and then Mr Robertson bobs up as working for Aqualand, the beneficiary of the transfer. There's a clear conflict of interest there, isn't there?
I don't, I don't believe so, but, I mean, he left, left the authority and was, as I understand, probably looking for work to, as a consultant, probably one that we could use because he's got decent knowledge of the whole area.
Right, so Aqualand ever saw his employment as a reward for assisting Aqualand on the project?
Certainly, I would reject that, and I'm confident I can reject that on behalf of Jin Lin and John Carthy, the CEO. I mean, he's a talented public servant.
Well, not talented in the eyes of... Well, not talented in the eyes of GrowCon. And when you read the correspondence where he was acting...
Talented in my head.
Well, okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
You're able to confidently assert that there's no conflict there, and you speak on behalf of Mr. Carthy and Jin Lin in that circumstance, but not in relation to other specifics?
Yeah, well, in terms of Mr. Robertson, I don't know him well. He's done good work with, in prior roles, as I see it, and he's done good work with Aqualand. You know, I think he's a person possessed of capability and integrity, so I have no reason to think that there was any, you know, deliberate creation of a role to act as a reward. You know, I think that I would reject that with confidence on behalf of my colleagues.
Who in Aqualand should we ask to get some specifics about the arrangements that led to Mr. Robertson coming to work for Aqualand?
All things related to this are done by the then-CEO, who has now been, continues on as the chairman of the Barangaroo Development for Aqualand Group, John Carthy.
John Carthy?
Yeah, and he's a very, very capable senior executive, which promoted out at Murbach into running a very, very major group in the Middle East. I hired a consultant to find me someone, and they found him. I offered him a role, and confirmed by Jin Lin and by Lin Yi. And then he proceeded to reshape both the makeup of the company, the Aqualand team, and was going well. And then GrowCon, you know, basically got into some difficulties. Not necessarily on that site, but elsewhere, brought pressures on. Sort to either joint venture or party or do something with somebody else. Lin leaves us for whoever, central, who might have been interested in taking the role. And it ended up being us, in a negotiated agreement and a negotiated price. And the authority paid its role to make sure there was continuity on the capital capability of the parties that were involved, and that's what happened. And the name was Draper, I'd read in the evidence, was the key person and capable public servant that overviewed all of that.
So you were aware of the negotiations?
No, I didn't get involved. I took, you know, I would see our advisory board and say, well, you know, what's happening on Barangaroo? Well, we're continuing discussion, we're in an offer, which each, each time we had a meeting, I would report through to Mr. Lin Yi. There's continuing discussions on the opportunity to take a larger role in Central Barangaroo. And, you know, if you're happy with that strategy, the team will continue on, and he would be doing that with both his son, Jin Lin, who was basically a young man being tutored by a more senior, very capable, properly CEO. Which I'm a finance guy, but, you know, I'm a finance guy, I'm not a property guy.
That meeting with Premier Barageeklian, that occurred in China, did you say?
Sorry.
That meeting with Barageeklian occurred in China?
Yeah, it's her, yeah, to the visit to China. I don't know the exact date, but I can get that for you. And to have a big delegation with her, and, you know, the consul general hosts and other investors in Australia, in New South Wales, visited with the premier, she visited ministers of the Chinese Guangzhou government and so on.
And so it's your evidence that there was no other discussions with Premier Barageeklian relating to Barangaroo at all?
Not that I recall, no.
Do you speak to the premier often?
No, I'm not, I'm not...
Not a friend of hers?
I'd be an acquaintance of hers. I wouldn't, I've never been. I don't have dinner with her or lunch with her, or...
She's not someone that you can pick up the phone to?
She was a colleague when she was at the Commonwealth Bank, you know, other than that. But I know she's not a close colleague, no. Someone I know, obviously. I know a lot of people in public life. But I've found her to be favorable, and she's a very good transport minister, and I deal with her in other areas and through my other interests.
Any other questions from the committee members?
No.
Okay, that concludes the hearing then, Mr. Smith. And we thank you for your attendance and your cooperation. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much.